Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustment. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the call up for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. From our far left, let's start our introductions, please.
Gaspal Bimba.
Michael Donlin.
Richard Tripp.
Crystal Moran, Secretary.
Lynn Perkins, Chair.
Craig Corbett, Vice Chair.
Jason Dragani.
And we have Code Enforcement Officer Robert Mackey with us as well. And our clerk, Lucy Peoples, is in the back. Please shut off any cell phones, iPhones, iPads, anything that will create a distraction to the proceedings. And we're scheduled to terminate at 10:00 PM. Audio/video recording are proceeding. And in the event of an emergency, please just exit to the rear of the room and down the stairway. Someone can help you or assist you if you have a problem there. That being said, we'll start our first case for the evening. And Mr. Donlin will sit in place of Mr. Burgess in the first case. And Mr. Bimba on the second case. And Mr. Dragani, you'll sit on the third, should we get to that point, okay?
Yes, sir.
That being said, we'll proceed forward. And the first case this evening is 25-103. Presentation by Edward Herbert Associates and representing Craig and Snow Bono for Central Street. Oh, good, thank you. Gentlemen, good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
Great.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure. For the record, my name is Shane Gendron. I'm employed with Herbert Associates. And with me this evening, I have Mr. Bono, who's the owner of the property.
Okay, Mr. Gendron, welcome. I think you've been with us before, correct? You've been with us before?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So our protocol would be to have you get those five criteria for the record.
Sure thing.
And then we'll expound from there, hopefully before 10:00 PM. What do you say?
I hope so.
All right. So are a lot of other folks. So please proceed.
Sure. The variance is not contrary to public interest because the requirement of the first-floor commercial space is more appropriate for a very busy commercial area. This area of Central Street is predominantly residential and multifamily use. The construction of the townhouses is appropriate for this area. Construction of the drainage and grading within the flood zone will not have any downstream effects because the proposal meets the increased volume for the 50-year storm events. Two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the ordinance allows for a residential usage on the upper floors. And there will be one three-story commercial unit in the building facing Center Street to satisfy the commercial component. The floodplain will not be negatively impacted by any of the construction for the drainage. Three, substantial justice is done because the use being proposed would allow the property owner reasonable use of the property, consistent with other properties that have been redeveloped in this area. The zoned use of the floodplain restriction would make nearly impossible to develop this parcel in any meaningful use. Four, values of surrounding properties are not diminished. The area would be cleared of dangerous and unsightly fire-damaged building. The new construction of residential units and the one commercial unit would be in keeping with the area and would raise the value on the subject property and in turn raise surrounding property values. And then five, AI, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and specific application of that provision to this property. Trying to conform to the zoning would be impossible as this lot is unique in shape and configuration, which does not make it conducive to strictly a commercial use. It is surrounded by residential properties, which make this proposal in keeping with the neighborhood. Limiting the area for parking necessitates the one-car garages on the first floor of the residential units, thereby leaving plenty of parking on the lot for the commercial unit. And I, two, the proposed use is a reasonable one. The property is located in a residential area with commercial zoning, which suits this proposal. The zoned use and floodplain restriction would make it nearly impossible to develop. This proposed plan would allow revitalization of this area. The proposal will pose no threat to public health, safety, and will meet all of the current building codes.
So that takes you off of the script. Please feel free to elaborate.
Elaborate on what we're doing here?
Yes, sir.
So currently, the property, 23 Central Street, is a burned-out, single-family home that Mr. Bono has owned now for about a couple of years?
Yeah, about two and a half.
About two and a half years. And he's come to our office to basically redevelop the property. And we spent some time, we met with Liz in the planning office, we met with Bob Mackey, I think we met with Mark Louro on this one, too, to talk a little bit about just the, you know, the restrictions that we have with this property and how we could redevelop it. Originally, we had come in with a proposal, when we met with them initially, that was just going to be straight residential. We weren't going to include any commercial component to it. Liz kind of asked us, she thought it was more in keeping with the zone than if we did provide some sort of commercial. But we really wanted to make sure that that commercial use fit with the zone. So we didn't want to try to put some sort of storefront or a restaurant. So what we're looking at is that front unit that faces Central Street would be some sort of professional office. And that's what we sized all of our parking calculations and everything for, was based on some sort of commercial office, professional office use. The other part of this variance is that we're looking to do garages on the main floor. So these would be like standard townhomes. I think we included an elevation of what the building would look like. But the garages would not be commercial space. So there's a specific provision in your zoning that says, in this zone, residential use has to be on the second and third floor, cannot be on the ground floor. We think it makes more sense to develop this the way we have it, providing garage parking for all the residents. So every resident in the 10 units would get one, single garage space. And that helps take care of parking on the site. It cuts down on the need for excessive parking. But we are providing sufficient parking for the commercial and the additional residential that we would need. The other part of this variance that we're asking for is to do some stormwater detention and retention in the flood zone. We looked at this, we based it on our worst-case storm event for 50-year to meet New Hampshire AOT regulations and Town of Derry regulations. We know, obviously, we'll have to do some compensatory work as far as the flood storage and making sure that we're not creating any offsets where we're creating any problems downstream. But we are meeting and treating that 50-year storm event. And I think the plan works pretty well. There's no excessive fills, really. It's limited to about a couple of feet to build those side slopes. And obviously, we know that we have to do some compensatory work to make that, when we model this out finally, when we get to planning board, that we wouldn't have any increased volume of material in this flood zone. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's kind of a synopsis of what we're looking to do.
I'm going to go over to Mr. Mackey real quick. Mr. Mackey, I'll kind of jump in protocol here, but if you'd like to get into your staff report a little bit, or what your version of what these folks are here for, that would help.
Okay. Again, and it was brought out, property is located in the central business zoning district. Currently does have, as Mr. Gendron said, there's a burned-out, single-family home. What they're looking to do, build these 10 units of residential condominium and then one unit with commercial. In the central business district, you are allowed to do multifamily, but only in conjunction with a commercial use. So that's why they've added that commercial component in order to comply with the zoning regulation. Also, as Mr. Gendron said, one of the restrictions, if you're going to do multifamily within that central business district, is that you cannot have residential below the second floor. These are proposed to be your typical townhouse-style condominiums that have the garage under. So each property has its own garage under. Again, and it was felt that technically, even though it's a garage, it's still a part of that residential use. So that's why they're seeking a variance to allow for that residential use on the first level of the units.
Mr. Mackey?
Beyond that, central business, you're allowed up to 12 residential units per acre. So this would fall within that guideline. I think, as Mr. Gendron said, their desire is to have everything else comply with the regulations. As far as the second request, which regards the 100-year flood, in our zoning ordinance, there is a chapter that talks about the conservation corridor. And again, that's everything that's within the 100-year flood zone or Zone AE, if you will. And basically, because the town classifies it a conservation corridor, you have very limited uses, really does not allow for any type of new construction, with a couple of exceptions like utilities for the town, that sort of thing. But as far as these drainage features that they're looking to put into that area, that typically wouldn't be allowed by right. So that is the second variance request. I think, obviously, were this to be approved, it would need to go on to TRC review, where drainage and site lighting and parking and all that would be ironed out with the town's TRC staff. And then, obviously, would need to go to the planning board for full site plan review. Again, there's some pictures of it in the file. And with that, I'll take questions, too.
Mr. Corbett?
Yes. So, Mr. Mackey, looking at it, we've got 11 units, one of them being commercial. So we're really just kind of focused on 10 of them? That's correct, in that regard, for the...
Well, I mean, again, under central business, the regulation for the density is up to 12. It's dealing with residential, up to 12 residential units per acre, which this would fall within. But again, only as a mixed use in central business district.
And so my second question, looking at it, three stories. The first story is the garage, the second story being the first floor of the townhouse. What was the purpose or what was the thought behind what we're looking to accomplish typically with that first floor? Was it that it should be commercial use? Or what was, do you recall what, like, really the intent was, that we would want residential use is just on the second floor?
Oh, well, I think...
Spirit of the ordinance?
Yeah. The intent of the ordinance was, which makes sense in my brain, if you're on, like, the main street and so forth, the thought was, at the time, you would get development come in, you would want your commercial on the first floor, and then probably levels above would be residential, which does make some good sense. You get off of the main street, it's a little bit, probably, a little different scenario, depending on what area that you're in. But the basics was kind of thinking about, like, Broadway out here, where you'd have commercial and then residential above.
Got it. Thank you.
Commercial being perhaps retail on Broadway with residential.
Retail, office, whatever, yeah.
And the recollection on that also was a driver towards workforce provisions to support those businesses. And this property just kind of is on the outskirts of that CBD. It's not right in the heart of it.
Yeah, probably, what, two-thirds of the way or so down Central Street?
Yep.
Give or take, yeah.
So just a discrepancy on, under the public interest part, we have the increased volume of 50-year storm event. Are we 50 or 100-year on this flood zone?
The flood zone that's marked out as 100-year, for our stormwater modeling, we don't model on a 100-year storm event.
I see.
We model on a 50-year, based on your regulations.
Okay. Is the impact of this because you, I mean, you've geniously created land? If you and God could have a conversation, I think you'd solve a lot of the world's problems right now. But not that I necessarily favor the application in that regard, but it's notable. But does the ninth, 10th, 11th unit on this push you closer into that 100-year flood zone that you have to have this variance for? Essentially, where does the 100-year flood zone stop?
What's a, well, the 100-year flood zone is clearly depicted on the plan. So if you look at the flood zone AE NGVD 29...
The plan we're looking at right now?
Yes. That's your black line that you see running through.
I see.
That comes, just starts underneath parking space five and six.
Okay.
And runs along the back. No, those units don't. Really, what limits this lot is the pork chop effect that you get. You come in, very narrow, about 65 feet of frontage on Central Street, and you come in, and it opens up where the parking is, basically. We looked at a bunch of different possible layouts. Now, an interesting thing about this zone is that that building, I believe, has to fall within, is it eight feet, Mr. Mackey? Is it eight feet within of Central Street?
With the, yeah, with the maximum setbacks.
Yeah, so I have to have my front building line within eight feet of Central Street. So it creates kind of a unique situation there, where, you know, anything that I want to do, I need to create a driveway that allows two-way traffic. Okay? So we've done that. We've given you a 24-foot travelway coming off of Central Street. We've given you a four-foot sidewalk along the front of all the units, so that everybody has proper access into the building. The real limitation is that pork chop effect that we're getting there. If we cut off units to the end, could we limit some of our impact into the flood zone? Perhaps. But we're also trying to balance what, you know, Mr. Bono's looking to do with the property and obviously make it, you know, financially feasible for him to be able to redevelop this property. So I think we've done a good job. We're actually providing one extra parking space than we need. And I think the site comes together okay. As far as the flood storage, I mean, we've done this before, where we've done storm drainage in the flood zone. And, you know, we understand the limitations and the things that we need to do and the things we need to look at to make sure that that doesn't create a problem for anyone. But we've done it before, and it's never been a problem, so.
And how, let me just wrap this one question up. How long have you folks owned this? Two and a half years?
Oh, two and a half years.
How long ago did this building burn?
About two and a half years.
I thought it was like five years ago.
No.
No?
No, I think I purchased that in probably, it probably burnt in 21, 2021.
All right. Well, I won't dispute that. Mr. Corbett?
I just wanted to piggyback off the flood question. So looking at the notes, it looks like that it's not necessarily one of the units, but rather the drainage retention plan. So looking at this map, is that, you know, below spots five and six? Or is this kind of the area, you know, southwest of 14? Where exactly would that drainage retention be that's impacting it?
Yeah, so that retention area that we're looking for the relief is anywhere you see the hatched out, kind of with the crosshatch or the horizontal hatch. And it's basically down below space 14. That is an infiltration pond that we have there. So we're building a little bit of side slope on the downhill slope of it. And then on the uphill slope, we're actually cutting into the existing ground a little bit. So we're creating some, basically what we're doing is we're creating, you know, stormwater retention and detention and actually infiltrating stormwater in that pond. Currently on the site, there is no stormwater treatment. You know, you have a house and you have a driveway, and you have runoff. So obviously, we have to match what they call a pre and a post-development scenario for peak flows. And that's what that pond achieves, basically.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Donlin?
Yeah, you guys touched, excuse me, you guys asked most of my questions. So the garage under, is that like just literally the garage under and maybe utilities or something? There's no living space on that first floor?
Yeah, that's correct. Is there a man door that goes in next to the garage for each unit?
There's a man door, yes.
Yes, there would be a door next to the garage, a regular, you know...
Sure.
Single door.
Going up.
Maybe a utility closet, I think, in there for like furnace and hot water heater and a garage space. And then stairs that go up to the first floor, living.
Strictly garage, basically. And those units are about the same.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
It's strictly garage on the first floor.
I will agree that the uniqueness of the pork chop lot, as it was referred to, and the sideways nature of the building definitely lends itself to this style of sideways condos, more so than what Mr. Mackey was talking about with the, to the spirit of the ordinance and the normal retail on the first floor, living area above.
These are two car garages?
No, single car garages.
Single car garage?
Yeah.
Hence the purpose of the 14 parking lots, parking spaces outside.
Yeah, I think the requirement is for 15 spaces for the residential. I think it's one and a half space per unit. It's on my plan, I believe, the parking calculation. And I think there's another additional nine spaces needed for the commercial. I believe we were allowed to use street parking for the commercial, but we wanted to provide onsite parking for it if we could accommodate.
The frontage on this lot, 65 feet?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Mr. Tripp, anything else?
So the retention pond is below the level of the Horns Brook?
No, no, we're working above the top of the bank in all situations. That pond is only about three feet deep at the deepest point. It's, the contour lines that you see are all one-foot contour lines, because this lot is so flat, it's hard to really show much. The only place it really drops is down towards the brook. Otherwise, it's a pretty flat, pretty flat lot.
So the, where does the water going into the retention pond come from?
If you look up towards the north or the top of the page, behind unit 11, I have a couple of structures up there. Those are going to be sediment forbays. So the water's going to be direct...
Sediment forbays?
Yep, they're what we call sediment forbays. Basically where, we're going to pipe our stormwater there, and it's going to clean out basically any sedimentation there. So any suspended solids, phosphates, nitrates, they get, basically, everything gets cleaned out there, and then you put your clean water into the pond, and it gets returned back to the ground.
So all the water running up the units and the parking go to that, those two?
That's correct. And I'm not showing you all the stormwater as far as like the structures and the basins and stuff. We haven't gotten that far. This is a modeling plan. So we basically look at what we're going to need for sizes.
I'm just trying to understand the...
Yeah, yeah.
Overall perspective.
I just wanted you to understand that we haven't fully engineered this. We've just sized the ponds appropriately.
So there's no drainage from the retention pond?
Well, the retention pond takes care of our drainage. That's where it all goes.
Yeah, so it seeps into the...
That's right.
Okay. So it doesn't go into Horns Brook?
Do you want to affirm that as a question? The Horns Brook. Did you want to affirm that as a question, or is that just a...
But the retention pond...
Yes, that's correct. Our stormwater is going into that pond, and we're infiltrating there.
And it will not access or runoff into Horns Pond?
Not in a 50-year storm event.
Okay.
Mrs. Moran? Mr. Bimba?
All set, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dragani?
I'm good, thank you.
On substantial justice, and this is where I start to get a little perplexed about your creation of land, you know, the comment is a reasonable use of the property. And I think often we'll reflect on things as reasonable versus excessive. And in that vein, you've created more land, and obviously, with the boundary adjustments, probably you could not have put these eight, nine, 10 through 11 structures. Am I correct? The lot line adjustment prior to that would have prevented this?
I think the lot line adjustment, really what it did was create a more usable boundary, basically, between both properties. It was mutually, you know, beneficial for both properties, because it was a very strange angle point in that rear line. And so now what we've done is basically squared it up for both properties. Did it make it better for this property? Yeah, I would agree with that. That's a true statement. I think it made it better for the neighbor's property as well.
At what point did you start the venture of trying to negotiate the lot line adjustments?
When did we, when did we start to negotiate it?
Yes.
Probably, I was actually acquiring, on buying, the neighbor number 21.
Okay.
And we were, that's why this has been on such a delay. And there was a conflict that he couldn't sell it. He wanted to sell it, delayed us. And then when he looked more into it, him and his brother own the property. His brother is in a nursing home. He just can't sell it. So that tied us up for a good six months. And then he's like, whatever I can do, I'd love, I'd like to help. Because he did want to sell me the property.
I see.
But it just kept delaying and delaying. I'm trying to, you know, get the house torn down, trying to get the process moving, costing me money every day. And we just finally said, we just can't make it work with that neighbor. So we came up with this lot line at that time.
Okay. All right. I have no other questions at this time. If no one else on the board has any address, we can move to public comment, unless you guys just have anything else you want to add before we go. Of course, you have opportunity to rebut anything, any statements that are made, so...
Yep. No, I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll make a call to the public. I don't see Mr. Preventure.
I can.
No, he's double duty. You've got the numbers there?
So anybody at home who wishes to dial in, you're going to need to listen closely. Your number is 646-558-8656. Your meeting ID is 323-909-140. Once you're in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody experiencing any technical issues, you're going to dial 603-845-5585, and someone will help you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Mr. Preventure, I know you're entertaining another meeting in town. Do we have those numbers for the screen?
Yes, Mr. Chair, they're up for folks at home.
Very good, thank you. All right. At this time, we'll make a call to the public. Anybody who wishes to come forward and support this application, this would be your opportunity to be heard. As Mr. Corbett, Mr. Preventure invites, did anybody remote to call in? And you'll have your opportunity to be heard from out of this room in that regard. Please press star nine, as Mr. Corbett has indicated, if you wish to be heard in this venue. In that regard, I don't see anybody rising for that call. So at this point, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application, this would be your opportunity to come forward. And likewise, anyone who is remote that would like to be heard on this matter, you can do so as well. Seeing no gestures or anybody rise in opposition to this application...
I have no gestures on this.
You have to come up. To have a seat and tell us your name and address.
My name is Steve Shepperson. I live at 18 Central Street.
Say again?
My neighbor, 18 Central Street.
Okay.
My neighbor from 16 Central couldn't make it today because he's on vacation. He's on a plane. I did notice that you've put in for a space and a half for every tenant in those 10 units. I have a garage, I can't put a car in my garage because it's full of junk, because I use it for storage. So I can't see everybody using their garage for a car. Now, if there's two people living in this home, that's going to be two cars if they're both working, which typically, most people do work. So I'm figuring, well, husband, wife, going to be working. If they have kids, or at least one kid that's driving, that's three cars per unit. That's an awful lot of cars for a very small space. And that's one of my biggest concerns.
Okay.
And now that I see the property line having the store directly, what'd you say, eight feet off the street line? Something like that?
Yes, that's our setback for that neighborhood.
That's still pretty close, but that's my biggest concern, is all the cars. Where are they all going to go? And there is no on-street parking during the wintertime, because there's a parking ban.
Yeah, crowded street. But understand that the policies and development regulations would dictate the vehicles that would be spaces for requirement.
Sure.
And that's where the one and a half comes from.
Mm-hmm.
It's an averaging, I think. Mr. Mackey, if you wish to speak to how we came about with the parking spaces per unit? Is there any magical formula there?
I think it's basically based on studies that have been done throughout, you know, other towns and so forth, and pretty much, pretty consistent, even the states getting involved with that these days, as far as how much a town can actually limit the parking or the maximums that they can deal with. But that's been Derry's ordinance for quite some time.
Okay.
Wouldn't planning be more of a person to approach if that's an issue of parking?
Is the mic on? Go ahead.
Wouldn't, if there's parking concerns, bring that up to planning, more or less, for that meeting?
Well, yeah, for certain, planning board's obviously going to look at, look at that. They may even, depending on TRC, they may even require that this go to the Highway Safety Committee to be looked at for... Committee to be looked at for the flow coming in and out, whether they think it rises to that level. So there's still more review that would need to take place.
Okay.
I think to that point, as well, Mr. Chair, they kind of have it on here on the plan that looks like the space is required. They've actually planned out, when including the garages, one extra space than what the minimum would be today. So it looks like they've taken, tried to take that into account the best they could.
I see, thank you. So essentially, two and a half spaces per unit is-
No, just, yeah, just one, thank you. Just one extra space.
I see, okay. Anything else, Mr. Shepherdson?
I think that's about it. I just was concerned about the size of the property being an acre and you're saying you can do ten residential, which is a bit much for that small spot.
Mm-hmm.
If that's your rules, then those are your rules, but-
Okay. All right, very good.
I have a question.
Mr. Tripp?
Yeah. So how long have you lived in your home?
I think I've been here thirteen years.
Thirteen years. Have you ever experienced flooding?
No, I do have a sump pump in my basement and it does run every spring and every fall. It'll run. It runs pretty constant.
But no surface water?
No surface water in the house, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Shepherdson. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this application? All right, anybody online, Mr. Preventure?
Anyone rise online, Mr. Chair?
Very good, thank you. All right, then we will, we have addressed the public input section, session, section, help me out. Portion of our meeting, so we've satisfied our statutes there. Sorry for getting tongue-tied. Gentlemen, your opportunity to rebut and come back up.
I don't think we really have anything to add. I mean, you know, we, we reached out to the planning, they gave us the parking calculations, we followed those calculations. I, I think if planning board has a problem with it, you know, I mean, they may ask us to do something a little different, but I, you know, you lay, you folks lay out what the requirements are, we just follow those requirements.
Was, were all eleven units necessary in this? Going back to my question about reasonable?
You just try to do what you can do with the property to try to, you know, get, get the most value out of it, I guess. But, you know, it's, if it's one unit you're looking for, you know, to make it, you know, the park and an extra space of park and now too as well, you know, we're absolutely open to that.
If you went with, if you went with one less unit, it eliminates the flood zone issue, doesn't it?
What I can do is I can dial it back some. I don't want to say that it's going to eliminate the need for any, any drainage in the flood zone.
Yeah. But it gets the parking lot out of it.
Yes, and I would do my best to pull as much of the drainage out of the flood zone if we lost a unit.
Is there any traffic studies on this?
No. To be honest, this isn't going to rise to the occasion. It's not enough units.
Yeah. It's an unusual question for me as well, but I understand Central Street pretty well.
Yeah.
And its congestion. Is the parcel that is at twenty-one, is that a rental property?
Um, yes.
Are, are all the rental properties in this neighborhood, I think there's a lot of them, aren't there?
There is. And there's several multi-units, you know, Seventeen Central Street is six units, Nineteen Central Street is six units, Fourteen Central Street is three units, One Sawyer Court is eight units, Seven Central Street is five units.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, I have nothing further right now. I can welcome a motion to go into, and before the motions made, to go into deliberative and, and have this discussion amongst the board.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
Just, if I could add one thing that I forgot during my report. We made the motion so that in theory, the board, when it comes time to vote, you can vote for both sections together, or you could vote for each section individually, the floodplain requests as well as the residents below the second floor.
Okay.
Because I guess one, in theory, could be approved and the other one not, so.
And, and that's, the second one is the residents, say again?
Second one's-
To allow residential use below the second floor.
Got it, okay. Gentlemen, you have, I think you can sense some hesitation here and not sure where we're going to go in our deliberation. Do you have an opinion on how you'd like to have this voted as two-on-one motion or, or divide the motions?
I, I think it probably makes more sense to divide the motions if, if, if the chairman's okay with that. But again, pleasure of the board.
I'm not seeing an overall total resistance to the project. And I can tell you, looking at that structure for a number of years and seeing it there, is certainly, this, this is an improvement. Though, understanding how, and, and I think that your lot line adjustment certainly is morally good. I, I certainly, my impression at first would have been that your first tact was to continue to make land to try and justify the reasonable, which I'm already on the record for. But I think overall, there's not a huge issue right now, so maybe we'll take that under, we'll discuss that in deliberation. So anything else before we move forward?
No, sir.
All right, very good. So the board, I think, has my reservations. If there's nothing else from any of the members sitting on this, we could take, take a motion and go into deliberation.
Make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Corbett makes the motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Tripp makes the second. All in favor of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I think I, again, I've expressed some reservations here, but let's open it up for discussion amongst the board. Anybody wish to start that discussion?
I can start because I kind of, I had some of the same reservations that you did regarding the potential excess, excessivity of eleven units, ten of them being residential. Where I've kind of come with it though is that the, the variance, the way I'm looking at it, the variance isn't necessarily for the amount of units. Typically, I feel, you know, you have that we can allow a two-family, but it's a multi-unit or something reversed. The difference of eleven to ten, to me, total units, I don't see it resolving the flood plan issue, which is, I guess, my larger point that I'll get to. Because I think anyways, looking at this, I might call it a basin, even though I know it's not the correct term. That's mainly what's within here. And I think even getting rid of a parking spot, you know, if it was fourteen, say, the rest of the lot, still outside of it, even if you shade that over, there's still going to be a chunk of it that's within that flood zone disturbance. And I think overall that what that's adding, you know, I get that you don't want to continue to bleed in if you can take some away, but I think the benefit it provides negates, to me, it negates the spirit of that, of that portion. So the amount of units doesn't bother me too much. I also agree with Mr. Donlin's point on the layout, that when you look at it from the street, you're not going to see just a wall of units right there in front of you. The way it's laid out, it works with this. And looking at the math that's on here, you know, the maximum that could be allowed, they would have had to get, you know, work with it, but they could have added an additional unit and still fit within the regulations. So while I feel ten's a lot, it's not as many as, you know, they're allowed. So I have a tough time saying that's excessive, even though I think it's a lot, I have a tough time saying it's excessive when it doesn't meet their maximum.
Mr. Tripp?
I really don't have anything, any comments at this point.
Mr. Donlin?
Yeah, I, I agree. The garage under is reasonable, given the lot and what I spoke to before, and it not being like a Crystal Ave lot. Although it is under the, to Mr. Corbett's point, although it is under like the twelve-unit generic density, which is what's allowed there, that it, I, I often struggle with the, the reasonable, whether it's reasonable, unreasonable, with the added, you know, well, we, we can make eleven work, but we have to do, you know, I guess that's why they're here, obviously. But, you know, it's like, well, if the whole entire thing, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that an elimination of a unit really alleviates that problem. I'm not even sure if two would. Just because the streets, like just square footage of what would be required, especially on a relatively flat lot. So that's kind of my thoughts at this particular moment.
Okay, Mrs. Moore?
I do agree with what has been stated. Usually, we have people coming in here wanting a variance for how many units? And they're not asking for that and they're the one or two under. The same, like, concern with having Horns Brook right there, but if they eliminate, you know, two or three parking, like Craig had said, then they don't need that one either.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, I guess I, I can lean towards the idea that, that the application is in that number of units, fits the acreage. And as Mr. Mackey's pointed out, there could have been additional units there for that, that acreage. And then you're back to the same request here. And I, I suppose in that regard, that's, that is a, makes it a reasonable request versus excessive. So I, I suppose I can lean with that. And, and then just cleaning up the, the floodplain issue, flood zone issue, probably might have had to be done without our permission if there was one less unit. So I suppose in that regard, that eliminates my concern about that flood zone request or relief. So in structuring motions, we have the option of doing both as a combined or do separate motions. Get the board's feel on that, Mr. Corbett?
I don't feel it needs to be split up. To me, and I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I don't have as much of a concern about the garages on the first floor because of the location here, you know, as I do with the spirit of that ordinance, which is my initial question. So I don't see, the flood zone is always going to kind of be there. So I think keeping it together prevents going into that flood zone for any other reason, rather than separating them.
All right. Mr. Tripp, you have an opinion on how we structure the motion, either separating the two requests for relief or keeping them on one motion?
I, I agree with Mr. Corbett's observation that if you keep them together, it makes it a lot simpler.
Okay. Mr. Donlin?
I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
All right, Mrs. Moore, how about you?
I agree.
All right, very good. We'll keep it as one motion then for both questions of relief. And right now, we have subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections. Are there any other concerns or aspects to the motion that anybody would like to add? Seeing no gestures there, we are going to take a motion to come out of deliberation then.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor of coming out of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We are out of deliberation. So with that, Mrs. Moore, you have a motion to read.
I do, thank you. I make a motion on case number two-five dash one zero three for Edward N. Hubert Associates LLC, owner Craig Insnow Bono, to grant a variance to the terms of Article Six, Section one six five dash three-three dot B dot five dot B dot I I I, and Article Nine, Section one six five dash seven-three of the Town of Derry zoning ordinance to allow the redevelopment of the property as an eleven-unit, three-story, mixed-use building, which will consist of ten residential townhouse-style condominium units and three stories of commercial use facing Central Street. The condominiums are proposed to have garages on the first floor, and the project will include the construction of some drainage ingrading within the flood zone, Zone AE. Parcel ID two-six one-six-nine, zoned C, B, D, as presented with the following conditions. We have one, one, subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections. And that concludes the reading of the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Mackey, you need a planning board and TRC indicated on here. Are you satisfied with permits and inspections?
I suppose permits and inspections would cover it, but-
Okay, very good. All right, that being said, Mrs. Moore has the motion. Did we get a second on that motion?
Donald.
Yeah, Mr. Donald.
Mr. Donlin, thank you. Motion's on the floor now for the finding of fact.
Finding a fact for case twenty-five dash one zero three. The board found that currently there is a non-habitable, burned-out, single-family dwelling on the property. The property is located in the Central Business Zoning District, which permits multifamily residential use as a mixed use in conjunction with permitted commercial uses. This proposal requests garages on the first floor and approval to locate some drainage retention features in the one-hundred-year flood zone, which encompasses the rear portion of the property. So there are two variances being sought. The first request is to Article Six, Section one sixty-five dot thirty-three dot B dot five dot B dot I I I, which requires that all residential units are to be located above the first floor. The second variance request is to Article Nine, Section one sixty-five dash seventy-three, which describes prohibitive uses, all new construction, with the conservation corridor defined as, in the zoning ordinance, as all land located within the one-hundred-year flood zone. If the variances are approved, the proposal will require technical review by town staff and planning board site plan approval. And the board also includes all facts found in the meeting minutes for this application and incorporates all meeting minutes into its finding of facts and decisions. Does anybody have any additions or addendums to make?
Seeing no gestures there, very good. That motion, all, let's move that motion forward, I'm sorry. All in favor of moving the motion for a vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Moore?
Chair, I vote yes.
Mr. Tripp?
I vote yes.
Mr. Corbett?
Also vote yes.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
The chair will support hesitantly on one of the questions, but make it unanimous nonetheless. So congratulations, gentlemen. Your application has been approved. Of course, anybody who is agreed by this has thirty days to ask for rehearing, reconsideration. After that recourse would be to Superior Court. Okay? Good luck, congratulations. I'm looking forward to seeing that, that building gone and cleaned up.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Yes, thank you.
All right, next case up is case number twenty-five dash one oh four for Alex Hermes. Did I butcher that the right way?
I work for the Lovells, so.
Well, obviously, you know your client's name. How'd I do?
Good.
You here alone?
Yes.
Okay. And you saw our protocols?
Say again?
So you saw our protocols?
Yes.
So, welcome and please proceed.
My name is Joseph Tui. I am with the Lovella Associates, representing Alex Harms.
Can you speak into the mic?
My apologies. The proposal involves a pre-existing, non-conforming lot at two Kingsbury- My apologies. The proposal involves a pre-existing, non-conforming lot at 2 Kingsbury Street, also known as Tax Map 37 Lot 95, which is currently on water and sewer. The request is to allow demolition of an existing garage in breezeway, followed by the construction of an addition that will extend 128.6 square feet further into the front back, sorry, the front setback than what exists. The existing garage is 20.57 feet from the front setback, whereas the required setback is 24.36 feet. Proposed front setback, the request is to reduce the setback to 20.4 feet, which is closer than the required 24.36 feet. The goal is to extend the house to create a uniform, visually appealing structure that aligns with the existing setback of the garage, providing both functional space and a pleasing design. The variance will not be contrary to the public entrance, because the variance will not propose changes in keeping, I'm sorry, because the proposed changes are in keeping with the established character of the neighborhood. The existing structures already encroach on the front setback, and the proposed reconstruction will align the property with the typical setback pattern of the neighboring properties, with the average setback of 24.36 feet within 300 feet of the frontage of the property. The requested variance allows the reasonable improvements while maintaining the neighborhood's overall consistency. Since this is an older neighborhood, where many properties are already in similar non-conforming situations, granting this variance would help maintain the enhance, maintain, enhance the neighborhood aesthetics and functional integrity, benefiting the whole community. The spirit of the ordinance is observed, because the purpose of the front setback is to ensure that the properties maintain a consistent and aesthetically pleasing relationship with the street, while also promoting safety and light. In this case, the proposed changes would not result in new or disruptive pattern of development, but instead maintain a consistent alignment with the neighborhood properties. Substantial adjustments is done, because the proposed changes allow the property owner to make reasonable and necessary improvements to an existing, non-conforming structure without creating any significant negative impact on the surrounding property or the community. Denying the variance would result in an unjust burden on the property owner, who would be unable to update and improve their home in a practical way. The modest increase in the footprint and the slight encroachment on the front setback are balanced by the benefit to the homeowner and the minimal impact on the public. The gain to the homeowner outweighs any potential losses to the public. The value surrounded the property would not diminish, because the proposed variance aligns with the existing development patterns of the neighborhood. The average front setback, briefly stated, is 24.36 feet in the neighborhood, which is very close to the proposed 20.4 feet, making the requested setback more consistent with the overall neighborhood than if the homeowner were required to maintain the current setback of 35 feet. Additionally, the proposed improvements to the property, such as removal of outdated staircase, a overhang, and a garage, will likely enhance the appearance and functionality of the property. These updates can increase the property's value and contribute to the overall appeal of the neighborhood, rather than detracting from The literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. The property in question has special conditions to distinguish it from other properties in the area, which justifies the variance. The existing dwelling and a garage are already situated within the front setback, 21.25 feet for the dwelling and 20.5 feet from the garage, predating the current zoning regulations. The lot size is 100 by 100, which is relatively small for this type of development. It makes it difficult to adhere strictly to the 35-foot setback without losing substantial usable space of the property. These conditions make the literal enforcement of the 20-foot setback particularly burdensome. The proposed use is reasonable. The request is a modest extension of the existing structure. Simply straining out the property to eliminate jogs in the building line, this is a reasonable solution to improve the functionality and appearance of the property. The request to the extend the building by 128.6 square feet into the setback is minimum, and in keeping with the existing neighborhood development. The proposed setback of 20.4 feet would be closer to the average setback of the neighbor properties, and no significant negative impact on the neighborhood or surrounding proposals is predicted. Unnecessary hardship if the variance is not granted. If the variance is not granted, the property would be forced to maintain the current non-conforming status of structures within the setback, which would not allow the owner to make reasonable improvements to the property without significant redesign that may not be practical or beneficial. Given the property's pre-existing conditions and size, strict adherence to the front setback requirement would unnecessarily limit the use of and the potential for the improvement of the property. Therefore, because of the special conditions of the property, a reasonable use of the property cannot be achieved in strict performance with the ordinance. The requested variance is necessary to allow for reasonable use of the property and void unnecessary hardships.
Is that it?
Yes, it is.
All right. Saw from the images in the file, it looks like you're going to, you want to tear this garage, your client wants to tear the garage down and attach it to the building?
Yeah, so the garage is currently attached to a breezeway, via a breezeway. He wants to tear down the garage, remove the staircase and the breezeway, and attach it and have it, yeah, propose addition of 30 feet off the house itself.
I see the two doorways, one going down, subgrade. What's the status with that? Is this a two-family?
No, I believe it is a single-family.
Okay. That lower door looks like it's a heck of a funnel for runoff. Is that being improved?
Um...
The door behind the maple tree there?
On the side of the dwelling itself?
Yeah.
Ah, yeah.
Sorry?
That will be eliminated for any funneling into, from water and rainfall, if the proposed addition is added.
All right. Any other questions from anybody? Mr. Bimba, you're on this. You have any questions?
I'm all set. Is the driveway going to move closer to the building now, or it's going to stay?
Um, as it is proposed, the garage will be more or less fixed in place. So it will be fixed up and repaired once the addition is put in. So it's not going to move physical locations, it's just going to be fixed.
Okay. Mr. Mackey, care to give us any impressions here?
Sure. Property MDR, it's a little over 10,000 square feet, which again, Kingsbury Street, an older neighborhood, obviously smaller lots before the, that were developed before the current zoning. Again, the proposal here is to take down that garage that's there, and there's, there is a covered overhang right now that connects between the house and the garage, and then you have the stairs coming down towards the front, as you can see on the screen there. So they want to take that down, replace it, I believe, and looking at the plan, it'll be like one foot closer to the right side property line, but basically within the footprint, and basically lined up with what the front of that garage is. But because it's all going to connect as one structure now, they are adding more volume within that front setback requirement. In this case, and it's on the front page of your plan, what they did was, under the zoning, you are allowed to utilize the average front setback, the normal front setback, 35 feet, however, or you are allowed to use an average setback, which they calculated out at, I guess, 24.36 feet, and they're proposing to be at, whatever that was, at 20.4 feet. So because of that increased volume of 128 square feet, plus or minus, that's why we needed to send them for the variance. Obviously, were this to be approved, the permits and inspections, property is serviced by Town Water and Town Sewer.
In this zone, where do they take the setback measurement from? Is it the road edge, or?
No, it would be the actual front property line, so the actual edge of the right-of-way, which for Kingsbury, assuming it's 50, it's an older street, but assuming a 50-foot right-of-way, and you measure 25 feet from the center line of the road, takes you to somewhere around 12, 12 and a half feet off the edge of the actual pavement.
Got it, okay.
Could vary a little bit with Kingsbury, because some of the older streets, they have a little bit narrower right-of-way, but it's the front property line anyway, not the edge of the pavement.
I recall another applicant at one point duped his wife into allowing him a garage for his Harley Davidson, because he measured from the wrong spot, so... Okay, I have nothing left. Anybody else? You all set? Make a call to the public. You have nothing else for us?
All set.
All right, so there'll be some phone numbers there posted on the screen. Mr. Corbett will invite folks to those phone numbers, and our first call will be to anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application. Mr. Corbett?
Anybody at home who wishes to dial in, you're going to dial 646-558-8656. Your meeting ID is 323-909-140. Once in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, and if you're having any technical difficulties, please dial 603-845-5585. Someone will help you.
Very good. Call is to anyone who wishes to support this application. This is your opportunity to come forward and be heard. Anybody out there? Mr. Preventure?
Seeing no rise online, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then anyone who, I see no one rise here in the room, so anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application, this would be your time to come forward and be heard as well. Likewise, for anybody in the remote world that would like to do the same. And we'll give them two seconds.
Seeing no rise, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Preventure. So we will presume that we've satisfied the statutes for public input, and any rebuttal you may have, or anything you'd like to add before we go into deliberation?
Nothing to add, sir.
Very good. That being said, we can have the motion for deliberation.
I make the motion?
A second.
Mr. Obimba has the motion. Mr. Corbett has a second. All in favor of going into deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we're in deliberation. Anybody wish to lead off?
I don't really see much here. I understand, you know, why it's not a non-conforming property kind of staying in a non-conforming status after Mr. Mackey's explanation. But the way I look at it, currently, the staircase that we were shown is about 14 and a half feet from the frontage. I know that doesn't necessarily count, but looking at what this addition is going to do, it's two inches closer to the frontage than it currently exists today. It is a foot closer to the side, but, I mean, a two-inch increase, I really just don't see, I don't see a problem.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Moore?
I agree. I agree as well. I feel that it's not really changing much, and it's already non-conforming and reasonable.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bimba?
I believe it's not an excessive request. It's a slight volume increment staff report there, so I think it'll keep with the character of that neighborhood, given that almost all the lots are already non-conforming. They're not making adverse changes to change that character.
Okay. Mr. Tripp?
I don't see a problem with this.
All right, good enough. I think that to deny this would deprive a man's right to maintain his property and make it improved with the market. Certainly, since those homes were built in the 60s or 70s, the world of homes and housing has evolved, so I think reasonable prudence here to improve the property is fair. That being said, we can structure the motion. I think obtaining all town, state permits and inspections is favorable. I have nothing else to add there. Mr. Corbett, anybody else down my left? Very good. So we'll leave the motion as structured. All in favor of coming out of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, let me back up here again. I'm in a rush. Can we have, anybody wish to, I have a motion to leave deliberation?
I'll make the motion to leave deliberation.
Mr. Corbett, you may have to take over the ship.
Eesh.
Motion made by Mr. Corbett. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Mrs. Moore, in seconds. All in favor of coming out of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Mrs. Moore, you have a motion to...
I make a motion on case number 25-104 for Alex Hermes to grant a variance to the terms of Article 6, Section 165-46.C.4 of the Town of Derry zoning ordinance to allow the replacement of the existing garage and entryway with a new 24-foot by 33-foot addition, which will be located less than the calculated average front setback distance from the front property line. Parcel ID 37095, zoned MDR, as presented with the following conditions. We have one. One, subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections, and that concludes the reading of the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Motion's on the floor. Mr. Corbett, of the finding of fact?
Yep. Finding of fact for case 25-104. The board found the applicant seeking a variance due to a minor encroachment of the proposed addition into the average front setback. While the typical front setback requirement is 35 feet, the zoning ordinance does allow for the utilization of the average front setback. In this instance, the average front setback has been calculated at 24.36 feet, and the new addition is proposed to be setback at 20.4 feet at its closest point. Therefore, a variance is being requested. The addition will replace an existing garage and entryway. The property is serviced by Town Water and Sewer, and the board also includes all facts found in the meeting minutes for this application and incorporates all meeting minutes into its finding of facts and decisions. Does anybody have any additions or addendums to make?
Seeing no gestures there, means we can vote, move that motion forward for a vote. All in favor of doing so, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mrs. Moore?
I vote yes.
Mr. Corbett?
I also vote yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Obimba?
Yes.
And the chair will make it unanimous, five to zero. So congratulations, your application's been approved. Anyone agreed by this decision has 30 days, asks this board for reconsideration.
Thank you.
Very good. Have a good night.
I know. Maybe get me in trouble. I already got a headlight, I already got a headlight. Come on, I gotta go back.
Not calling anybody Mr. Rabbit, so...
They have no excuses not to show up when it's snows.
Next and last case is case number 25-105, Tapier Properties LLC. And you would be...
Hi. Good evening, board members. My name's Chris Sweniarzki, attorney from Divine Millamette, representing Tapier Properties, owner of 29 Crystal Ave. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the property. It used to be the Dairy Diner. We're here seeking a use variance to use the basement, and the entry for that is at the back of the property, for a two-bedroom apartment. Just brief history on this property, that... Brief history on this property that some people may not know. It is quite obviously a single-family house when constructed, which was sometime around end of the '40s, early '50s. The use is not, however, known for about a decade, and then it became a restaurant in the '60s. The part that we're talking about, which is the basement, has had a whole bunch of different uses over the history, some of which I referenced, things like hair salons, vacuum cleaner sales, it was a used car dealership at some point.
Could I? Could I? I don't want to take you out of your presentation, and I, forgive me, because the prior two applicants, I said, "You know what our protocols are." I would ask for you to bring, introduce the five criteria.
You wanna do that first?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. So, the first and second criteria largely considered together under New Hampshire law, and that's whether the variance will be contrary to the public interest, and whether or not the spirit of the ordinance is observed, and generally, the facts to demonstrate that are going to be the same. In this case, we have a proposal of an apartment that, it doesn't increase any traffic, I mean, you know, one, two-bedroom apartment is not going to generate a significant traffic impact. There's no congestion, there's no significant impact on schools, there's no impact to the character of the neighborhood, it's not even readily noticed, it doesn't create any sound, odor, or nuisance, and it doesn't create any health hazard or impact. And those are, those criteria that I just read off are from your ordinance as the objectives of your ordinance, so that's significant. The third criteria, substantial justice, that is determined under New Hampshire law by weighing the detriment to the applicant in denying the variance versus the benefit to the public in upholding the ordinance. Here, it's very hard to envision any sort of benefit the public gets by denying this variance, and this is why I was going through some of the facts earlier. I appreciated the protocol, I thought it might be easier to have some background, but when you're thinking about the uses that were here before, this is the least impactful by far. It's simply an apartment, there's very low impact on the community, so I think that goes greatly to the substantial justice component. Similarly, to the values of surrounding properties being diminished or not, I would say overwhelmingly, they would not be. In fact, I have a few printouts of your tax map, which was part of the application, and I'd like to just submit these into the record, but again, already in the application...
Please, please, if we want them, we'll ask you for them. We ask you to present that with your packet when you submit it, that's board policy.
You have them in your packet.
Okay. Yeah, right there. Please proceed.
Sure. So the graphic might make it easier, but I'll go through it in the packet as well. If you look at the tax map, the majority of this neighborhood is already residential. If you see on that tax map included with your packet, the subject property is labeled. All of the properties across from Crystal Ave have a residential use, according to your assessor's records, and the properties behind them, or to the left on the graphic, also have residential uses. Many of them are actually very similar to this, in that they are properties that were developed as residential in the 1940s, and then have been converted to commercial uses with accessory apartment uses as well. So this is essentially doing what the rest of the neighborhood is doing, and that's, I think, very significant in terms of values of surrounding properties, because this blends with the neighborhood quite well. It's exactly what the neighborhood is doing. As far as the fifth criteria, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance resulted in unnecessary hardship, because like many of the other properties here, the ordinance does not allow this use, but the use itself is what the neighborhood is. So when you apply it and say that there cannot be a residential use, it's a very significant hardship, because all of the other immediately surrounding properties are doing that, and it really renders the basement of this property somewhat useless, and that's especially important in a time right now, where there is, of course, a crisis for housing that is going to be moderately priced. So I think it's pretty clear that denying this variance certainly results in an unnecessary hardship.
All right, so outside of the scope of the scripted aspect of it, please proceed in your own words, if you wish to add anything, unless you're all set.
Well, that wasn't scripted, I was just talking.
Scripted by statute.
What do you mean?
Five criteria scripted by statute.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. So just getting back to the background, as I was saying in the discussion, we have a property here that's pretty unique, in that, on the one hand, it was developed as a home, and that's similar to the rest of the neighborhood, and also similar to the rest of the neighborhood, it has evolved into a commercial use. But what makes it unique is that it's really the only property in the area that doesn't have some residential use tied to it, and that's the important part. It really, not having a residential use here makes it very different than the rest of the neighborhood. Up and down this part of Crystal Ave, I think you all are familiar with it, we are mostly single-family homes that have been converted to commercial use, with some residential use mixed in as well. Right now, my clients operate this as part of their, it's a limousine car service business, so basically, it's an office, and it's a dispatching center for cars, giving people rides to the airport, things like that. This accessory type of use works very well with that. Happy to answer any other questions, if I know the answers.
Yeah, so understanding the history of the strip, right, and myself understanding the town from the early '60s, and I get your point, you know, what it used to be versus what it is. Of course, Hood Milk Farm isn't there blocking traffic back and forth to Pinkerton either, but we also see the transition of that strip, right? We see a new bank, we have T-Bones, we, you know, McDonald's, and we wouldn't have a residential unit under McDonald's either, right? But what is, how is the residential aspect of this property, how was it derived, and how did it come about, when it's been a commercial property for easily 50 years?
Yeah, the commercial aspect still remains, and this property has, throughout its history, always been two separate uses. There's always been a commercial use, the primary use, which was a restaurant, and then there's always been, in that basement space, which is accessed from the side or rear, a different use, and it's been all kinds of things. It's true, they've all been commercial in history, but the neighborhood has evolved, and the demands of the community have evolved, such that it's more beneficial to the community to have a residential use there. It's much more in demand by the community to have a residential use there than the commercial uses that I was describing, you know, for example, hair salon, car dealership, things like that. So it's really, the evolution is all about what the community needs right now.
Chair?
Mr. Corbett? So this would replace the commercial unit that I'm looking at on the left, Simply Cuts, with the residential unit?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I just missed what you said.
Looking up at this, looking at where the Simply Cuts is, the commercial unit, this would be replacing a commercial unit with the residential.
Yes, correct. Sorry, I didn't hear you say Simply Cuts. Yes, that's exactly right.
No, just to clarify, because he's asking about that end unit, I believe the apartment's going underneath the back.
Oh, Simply Cuts is on the end?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Simply Cuts is on the end.
Then it's not, yeah. So the apartment is the basement level, and it's on, it's accessed from the back.
So both of these, the existing commercial units will be remaining as they are today?
They are commercial, yes.
Who is, who is the limo, what is the limo company?
Axis is their name.
Axis, right. Yep, Traktive Vehicles Well Kept. And so this is not the owners that are going to reside underneath this? This is?
No.
Just something, kind of an offshoot to their current business?
Yeah. I don't know exactly who is going to live there, I'm pretty confident it's not them. I don't know if it's a relative, employees, I think it'll be housing that's available, but I would guess that at some point, if not immediately, it would be an apartment rental.
Anybody else? Mr. Drogani?
I just think with the experi... That's all right.
It's contagious tonight, isn't it?
Yes. I would just say that, on that whole side of the street, there is no residential.
Yeah.
It is all commercial, and not that far down that street, we had someone trying to bring up churning a commercial all into residential, and it seems like they're trying to, we're always trying to protect our commercial.
Well, actually, 35 is residential. 35, Crystal Ave, not next door, but then the next property, so that one is a residential use, according to the tax assessor. And yeah, the other properties on this side...
On that side of that street. I'm just talking about that side of the street.
Yeah, 35 is on the same side. So if you, if you're looking at the tax map, you have that little strip that leads to the school, and then one property, that's commercial, the next property is residential.
It's the insurance office across the way.
Yeah, I'm trying to picture where there's a residence.
It's the Ben Johnson State Farm guy, across from T-Bones, who does the dueling signs.
Yeah.
So it might be, I'd have to defer to Mr. Mackey, it might be a...
It's the same as this, it's listed as office apartment in your assessor's records. I can give you a copy of the tax card, if you'd like.
No, that's fine.
It's actually very, very similar to this, or what's being proposed.
Any other questions right now? Mr. Tripp? Mr. Donlin? Mr. Obimba? All right, Mr. Mackey, you wanna help us out here?
Yeah, I mean, just to pick up on that, I think, across the street, right in that area, if you look across the street, I think there's more of a mix of what were old houses, and now you've got a tattoo place with some resident... There is a mix certainly across the street, and there may be, like, one or two residencies left on the other side of the street, but pretty much, it's across the street, I think. Beyond that, GC zoning district, which, again, does not permit residential use, does, there is a stipulation in there for pre-existing residents that is in there for pre-existing single families, so obviously, that's why they're here, seeking a variance. Again, just to clarify, again, what's being proposed is the lower level. If you drive behind, you are actually able to drive around to the back of this property, and that's where the entryways are for, again, as the attorney brought out, it has been multiple different types of commercial businesses that have come and gone over the years, but again, it's in the very back property, because the grade drops off, so you have walkout access around the back of the property.
And just to be clear, on the point of protecting commercial, we're not eliminating any of the commercial use that's here. Right now, that basement would be useless, it doesn't have any value as commercial, and we're leaving the current commercial, we're just trying to utilize the basement in a way that, again, lots of other properties, and I do understand, you know, they are across the street, they are still in the same zone, and certainly, in the same neighborhood. I get it, it's not, there's a difference, one side of the street and the other, but we do have, the next closest similar property is doing the exact same thing. The other properties are different properties, they actually are typical commercial zone properties. I mean, there's a picture, that's not, it's not really what you think of when you think of commercial property.
The, Mr. Mackey, the development of the old Merrimack Valley property that's there now, to the right of this building?
Okay.
Yeah. We had to, we had that case, and I can, you can see the parking area to the right of the building, just over the dumpster. We had to, we had a variance for that, that was encroaching into a wet area, as I recall, probably four years ago.
I believe you are correct on that, yeah.
Does this, does this proposed residential application, is that susceptible to flooding down there?
Not that I've, not, not that I've ever been aware of, but...
It's kind of reflective of what the approval was, we had to give four years ago, encroaching into a wet...
Yeah, and I think the grade comes down, and it's paved back there, as I recollect, I probably should have taken a drive down it, then it drops off again significantly, and that's, if you get further back out, is where your wetlands are.
It's primarily swamp wetlands, it's not like it's a running brook, so it's not susceptible to seasonal changes.
Correct, yeah.
All right.
The other thing I was just gonna add, I mean, that limousine, obviously, everybody knows this, as the sign up there is Dairy Diner, which was for years, I would say, back during the summer, maybe, it was a few months ago, anyway, the owner did come in, fill out change of use, the new owner, change of use paperwork for the limousine business that's in there, and the hairdressing business on the end is still there, so...
Mr. Drogani?
No, the salon is gone, but that, it has that walkway that goes over to the school, and then that has the wetlands at the very far back, but yes, it's high enough above that grade, because it's almost the same grade as the, the, that, across the, you know, right next door to it.
Okay. Mr. Tripp, or Ms. Donlin?
This might be, sure. Perhaps somebody would know the answer to this, but is it a safe assumption that the testimony to all the previous commercial activities could be assumed to be in one of those two structures we're looking at here, and not in the basement?
No, that's incorrect. The dealership that he was talking about was in the basement.
They're all in the basement, I know that. They are, all the ones that I mentioned are in the basement.
Were from the base, specifically?
Yeah.
This line was at the top left, but they're gone, they moved to another location.
Mr. Tripp?
Nothing.
Mrs. Moore?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. All right. Mr. Corbett, you all set?
I guess the only other question I have, has there been an attempt to rent, that you know of, at least since the new owners come in, to rent out the bottom, or the basement to continuing commercial use, or was it just deemed that it was vacant for so long that it wouldn't work?
I don't know the answer. I don't know if they've tried to market it. I do know, from my experience in the real estate industry for 30 years now, it's not that marketable in today's day and age. I mean, there's no exposure, it's, but I don't know the answer to your question as to whether they tried or not.
Thank you.
I wouldn't advise trying it.
Appreciate that.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, the, I think the last person that was in the basement was an artist that used to paint things.
That sounds right, yeah. I don't remember the exact detail, but I think in going over everything, I do remember reading something like that, but may have been in the environmental report they did for acquiring the property, where when they do those reports, they trace back all of the known history they can find, and, you know, it's like a 600-page report, but I think I do remember reading something to that effect, too.
Okay. Well, let's make a call to public, just to get through this formality. Anybody wish to come forward and speak in favor of this application? This would be your opportunity to do so. Likewise, we give the, lend the opportunity to anybody that's remote that would like to give their input. Mr. Corbett, you have some phone numbers for us for this?
Yep, anybody at home who wishes to dial in? You're gonna dial 646-558-8656. Your meeting ID is 323-909-140, and once in, you're gonna press *9 to raise your And once in, you're gonna press star nine to raise your hand. Anyone experiencing technical issues, you're gonna dial 603-845-5585. Someone will help you.
Very good, thank you. Seeing no one rise for the opportunity to speak in favor of this, we'll have anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of this, this would be your opportunity to come forward as well. And likewise, if you're remote, this would be that opportunity to speak in opposition of this. See anybody out there, Ms. Preventure?
Anybody that rise online?
Okay, then we will presume that we've met that statute requirement for public input. Any last comments or anything you want to give us feedback to?
Nope, other than I will certainly answer any other questions that anyone may have.
Think we can take a motion for deliberation.
I motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dugani. Anybody want to second Mr. Dugani or you want to ask more questions of the applicant?
No question, I think it's straightforward, I'm good to second.
Okay, Mr. Corbett makes a second off of Mr. Dugani's motion. All in favor of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we're in deliberation. This is one of those unique properties that historically, you know, has been there for a long time when zoning was probably non-existent. And Crystal Ave was probably a two-lane dirt road, perhaps, maybe not dirt road, but goes back in time anyway. And I can appreciate that it's one of these pieces, particularly to this application, that the, that the use, the desire to use the space for something other than just leaving it empty is being sought and perhaps as a revenue base. Mr. Corbett's question about has the owner tried to do anything with this spot? And the testimony is that there's virtually no exposure as a business and I understand that. However, my acceptance to that is, do we want to turn back the hands of time just to provide an additional residence? And if so, does that residence create any kind of issues relative to the criteria of a variance consideration? So that's kind of where I'm at. And I also likewise, we had this application several months ago, just down the street where the owners had purchased the property and immediately felt the only thing to do was to turn it into an all rental property, I think four or five units. And the board denied that. The owners put it up for sale, but notably, since then, a hair salon has gone into that building and the for sale sign is gone. And there's other commercial uses that aren't your typical uses. And so the denial of the board essentially created a success for the property owner that the property owner didn't think they could achieve. So those are my viewpoints over all of this application and I digress.
I agree with what you both have stated. There's listed six plus different businesses that have been in there. So I agree with the have you tried to rent it as commercial? Because the spirit of the ordinance is there to increase the commercial tax base and provide employment opportunities to dairy residents. So I just struggle if they haven't tried.
Uh huh, okay. Mr. Dugani?
I agree that the spirit of that zoning area being commercial and taking away a property that has had success, renting it, maybe not for the continuous of all the time, but it's been commercial for a very long time.
Mr. Tripp?
Like I said, I know that previously it was rented to an artist, but, you know, I doubt that he used the entire bottom floor of the, of the building. You know, it would seem that whatever goes in there, I would doubt that it would be occupying the entire bottom floor either. The use as a residence, you know, apparent, you know, obviously would use the entire floor, which would, you know, make good use of the building. So I'm torn between it being a residence and not having something commercial in there.
Mr. Corbett?
I'm also torn on this one. I was thinking about the case that you referenced across the street as well. What did separate that for me is if I remember correctly, they were also going to be eliminating an existing commercial tenant that was in there in order to make that residential to prove that it wouldn't work. So that, that one does weigh differently to me because that was not only was really no effort put in, but they were actively trying to force out current commercial uses. This one, where I'm torn is, I do think it's a good use for the property, but I don't think it's a great fit for the area. Especially, I do think there's the difference on the sides of the road where it is so strictly commercial there versus the other side. But, you know, I struggle to remember a third business being in that property since I've lived in town. So at the same point, it's owner occupied, we do have two units in it. To me, do I see a benefit, you know, I don't wanna call it necessary evil, but do I see a benefit that the additional revenue can help retain a company in town? You know, keep the limo company there? Perhaps, you know, help not raise the rent on, I know the salon's gone, but help if something else comes in that it can offset to attract someone else? So I can go either way with it. It does make it a little bit of a difference to me that, you know, we're still keeping the commercial uses that have been recently rented, one that's still currently active, but I don't know that I'd fight either way because I have a tough time with the location.
Yeah. I would just have a quick follow-up. I mean, I would just say that prior, when it was a diner, partial of that basement was used for their storage. So they didn't rent out the whole basement before. So there's probably a division somewhere belonging there. I also have a hard time putting, you know, another housing develop on that side of the road in that area. It's very secluded from any other type of homestead in the sense.
Well, I have to go back to, I'm, my, I'm tipping on both sides of the fence here. To me, it's a commercial property that's being utilized by two commercial resources, right? You buy the building, you know it's part of a commercial aspect and you accept that as part of it. And on the other hand, I do, do sit there and go, well, there's that idea that, that there, a business to go in there doesn't have exposure to it. I think your point was, Mr. Corbett's point was, for as long as he's lived in town, he's never seen a business there and I understand that. However, does that mean that I want to introduce a residential aspect back into this building when the owners that purchased the building understood what it was and it was up to them to utilize it in that fashion? I think it's possible that, that someone in the future, like if that hair salon doesn't stay there, but another hair salon eggs, you know, decides to take it up, maybe they enhance their business and move some of it down into the lower aspect of it. You see beauty salons turned into spas. Does that, does this property in the lower level lend opportunity to that? So I see more commercial aspects for that as part of an accessory to something that might be on the first floor. So in that regard, I just wrestle with the hardship on granting a residence approval to this. I think that's where I'm leaning and just take any other, any other ideas on this before we go any further in structure of motion. Mr. Tripp, any rebuttal?
I agree that if the business that was on the ground floor, which is not the basement, if it was a business that could make some use of the basement in the, in their operation, you know, there would be some, you know, justification for making it all commercial. But I don't see what's currently in there as providing an opportunity, you know, to expand into the basement. The, it's a, it's a flawed building.
Yeah, it's because of it, when it was built and the history there, it doesn't quite fit in with the main strip at this point or the intentions of what the ordinances were intended for. So granted, the leniency that's being asked by this board, it's a delicate, delicate issue.
I would just add one last thing. That other property that we were talking about, there was a location that was not seen by the street that was renting out as a business. So it doesn't always have to have line of sight.
Yeah.
Just needs signage.
Sure, okay.
Could you speak up a little?
I'm sorry. The other property that we voted on not that long ago had part of their building that was rented out to a business that was not on line of sight. It was in the backside of the building.
Okay, Mr. Corbett, you all set?
Yeah, I don't disagree with anything that's been said. I think everyone's making good points. Like I said, I'm just straddling the fence.
Got it. Mrs. Moore, you all set?
I, I am, I'm still undecided.
Well, let's look at structuring the motion. We have this all state and town permits and inspections. Are there any other ancillary points that anybody would like to add to that motion? Seeing no gestures there, I think we can make a motion to come out of deliberation. If members of the board are undecided, wish to table, you can always make that approach. Otherwise, we can come out of deliberation and do a, make a vote.
Bring a vote.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Dugani, you want to make a motion?
I make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Mrs. Moore?
I second that motion.
Very good, thank you. All in favor of coming out of deliberative, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Moore, you have a motion to read?
I do. I make a motion on case number 25-105 for Taper Properties LLC to grant a variance to the terms of Article 6, Section 165-32.1.A of the Town of Dairy Zoning Ordinance to allow the installation of a two-bedroom dwelling unit in the basement floor of the existing building. Parcel ID 32028, zoned G.C. as presented with the following conditions. We have one. One, subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections. And that concludes the reading of the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Tripp has a second on that motion, very good. It's on the floor. Mr. Corbett, you want to do the finding of fact?
Yep, finding of fact for case 25-105. The board found the property is zoned in the general commercial district, which is not listed residential as a permitted use except for pre-existing single-family dwellings as of July 19th, 2013. Therefore, a variance to this provision is being requested. The floor plan submitted shows a two-bedroom unit being proposed. If approved, appropriate building and life safety code requirements must be complied with regarding egress, et cetera. And the board also includes all facts found in the meeting minutes for this application and incorporates all meeting minutes into its facts and findings and decisions. Does anybody have any additions?
Seeing no gestures there, so we can move this forward for a vote. All in favor of moving the motion for a vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Tripp?
Well, I'm gonna vote no. It's a, it is a possible use of the basement, but it's really not conducive to, I think the health and safety of anyone that would be renting it because, you know, the, it's apparent to me you can't get a, a fire vehicle down there, you know. It's, it's just a, it's just a bad use. Well, it's not a bad use, but it's a poor use of the, of the building.
Would you rest on questions one and two of the applicant's request, which would be the public interest and spirit of the ordinance?
I would say the spirit of the ordinance.
Okay, very good. Mr. Corbett?
I'm also, I'm going to go with a no for now. The issue I see mainly is the spirit of the ordinance, you know, to the points that I mentioned before, the side of the road, basically the area in general. However, this isn't something that I would be opposed to in the future. You know, if we find ourselves that it's still having a tough time, you know, being rented or for a number of reasons, then I would reconsider. But I think at this time, I need to be a no.
All right. Mr. Dugani?
I'm gonna be a no, mostly the experience and the ordinance. Also, if you drive by, you'd see that the whole parking lot is filled with their cars. So I think that would also be that, like Tripp was saying, a fire hazard.
Mrs. Moore?
Chair, I also vote no for the reasons that have been stated, but also being a recent purchase, I can't find the hardship and not trying is causing a self-inflicted hardship.
Very good. The chair is gonna make an unanimous no as well. As I stated during deliberation, I have a hard time with the hardship on this just in general. And therefore, just granting an issue that's not conforming so early on in the applicant's venture here just doesn't seem to add up for me. So we, the application's been denied by a vote of five to zero. Of course, you have opportunity to bring back within 30 days, points or considerations, request for rehearing after that recourse would be superior court. All set?
Yeah, when can I expect the written decision?
Within five business days.
Okay, will that be emailed to me or do I have to pick it up?
Do we send that out snail mail or do we email? We can do both.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening. All right, next up, we have minutes. Anybody have any issues with the minutes? Any changes, alterations, or should the minutes be accepted as presented?
I thought they looked as presented. I'd make a motion to accept or approve.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Corbett to accept the minutes as presented. A second please.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Moore seconds that. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. I have no correspondence or literature to the board.
I have the, an old business update of Senate Bill 84.
Thank you.
The planning board is going to recommend I.T.L., or to send it to I.T.L. And then also on another note, they have an A.D.U. bill for detached A.D.U.s for up to 950 square feet. Would that raise a couple red flags for me?
Similar to what Massachusetts is doing?
I don't, I'm not from there.
This, of course, is from the workshop with the planning board.
Yes.
And myself, Mrs. Moore was there and she outlasted me, as Mr. Tripp did as well. And I think Mr. Dietzel was there as well. and I think Mr. Dietzel was there as well, somebody may have watched it remotely, I don't know. It was a long day for myself and I need to leave and go home and have dinner at eight o'clock at night, so.
And I'm just so young and youthful and full of energy.
There you go, and more coherent than I am this evening, apparently.
I wouldn't push it that far.
All right, well, we appreciate all the input on that and I'm sure the planning board appreciates our participations as well. We have any cases for the next meeting?
We did have one case come in for, whatever the date is in March.
Second, March second.
Where's the year going?
Yeah, the first is a Saturday.
Bob really wants to be here on the second.
The first is a bad day?
No, it's a Saturday.
Saturday.
All right, well, that being said, we can take a motion to exit the room.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett, a second please?
I'll second it.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, we're adjourned, have a good night, you're on.